Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 30th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian, Devine, Najarian, Mayor Sinanian, Mayor Protem Garpedian.
Here. Today's flag salute is led by Councilmember Devine.
Please rise, join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Holocaust survivor and Nobel Laureate Eli Weizel said in his 1986 Nobel Prize speech, quote, "We must take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented. Sometimes we must interfere. When human lives are endangered, when human dignity is in jeopardy, national borders and sensitivities become irrelevant. Wherever men and women are persecuted because of their race, religion, or political views, that place must be, at that moment, become the center of this universe." Sadly, because of the 11 lives that were lost at the hands of a vicious murderer, a Jewish temple of worship, a synagogue in Pittsburgh, has become the center of our universe. We pray, and will continue to pray, for the wisdom and ability to disagree in agreeable ways. We pray and ask for guidance to secure the blessings which have been bestowed upon us as citizens of this great country. And we will pray tonight and always that there be no hate in our midst, no violence in our neighborhoods, and that all men and women of this earth live with one another in harmony. Our neighbor's pain is our pain, whether it is in our schools or in a place of worship a thousand miles from here. We must take sides each and every day against anyone who speaks out in terms that are anti-Semitic, anti-black, anti-Latino, anti-Asian, anti-Armenian, anti-women, children, and run contrary to those values which we have fought to secure in our nation. We pray for peace and an end to hate here in our city and all over the United States of America, tonight and always. May the fallen rest in peace and their families find some comfort, knowing we will work to make this world a place where this will never happen ever again. Amen.
Okay, before we go to our report of City Clerk, I do want to mention that, as you can see, I'm the Mayor Protem, I'm running the meeting tonight. Our Mayor, Mayor Sinanian, is not here, is absent due to health reasons connected to his leg injury. We wish him speedy recovery, so he will join us next week. And he also requested that we adjourn this evening's meeting in the memory of those lives lost at the terrible massacre in synagogue in Pittsburgh this last Saturday. And he asked all of us to join in solemn remembrance of those who have been affected by the horrendous act of violent terrorism and anti-Semitism. We cannot ever have any tolerance for hate of any group in our country. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We wish you, as I mentioned, speedy recovery, and we'll see you next week. And at this time, I would like to go to Mr. Agajanian, Councilmember Agajanian, the Chair of the Housing Authority, to reconvene the housing meeting and maybe close it out, then we continue.
And we have one item to report out from closed session.
Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'll take role for the Housing Authority. Authority members Devine.
I'm sorry.
We do have to reconvene.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Authority members Devine.
Here.
Garpedian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Parazian, Sinanian, Chair Agajanian.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have a motion to read. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of the Myers-Nave firm to assist the city attorney with a matter and to incur necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the provision of said services.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Authority members Devine.
Yes.
Garpedian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Parazian, Sinanian, Chair Agajanian.
Yes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So we adjourned at 6:09 PM.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. What is next, please?
Sir, Mayor and Council, the report of the Clerk is that the agenda of the October 30, 2018, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Friday, October 26, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Next is presentation and appointments, and at 3:00 a.m. is the agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, November 6, 2018.
Mr. Golanian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of City Council. For the meeting of November 6, 2018, there are no agendized items for the Glendale Housing That day in the afternoon commencing at 3:00 PM, there'll be a joint meeting of Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority, and we'll have one item, report from Director of Community Services and Parks regarding status of program planning for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan, and transfer of fiscal year 2016, 17, and 2018, 19 CDBG funds. That day in the evening commencing at 6:00 PM, I apologize, at 3:00 PM again in the afternoon, there'll be a special City Council meeting, and we'll have an item from Director of Community Development regarding Art and Entertainment District Professional Services Agreement for placemaking, urban design, and technical services. In the evening commencing at 6:00 PM, regular Glendale City Council meeting, there are three items on the agenda, action items, nothing on the consent calendar. Director of Community Services and Parks regarding request for limited exemption of the city's purchasing policy for the workforce section of the Community Services and Parks Department as it relates to procuring training services under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014, followed by Director of Community Development regarding repurposing transportation funds that was previously slated towards space 134 freeway ramps and space 134 preliminary engineering study. And finally, Director of Community Development regarding Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant from State of California Department of Transportation, request for authorization to accept grant funds in the amount of $300,000 for the West Glendale Sustainable Transportation and Land Use Study. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Golanian. What's next, please?
Mr. Mayor Protem and Council, next is the consent items, including minutes, and there are also two other items that have been requested to be taken out of the regular ordered agenda, so if you wish, we can.
Let's take the consent item first, and if there are no questions, or.
Let me just read into the record that following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed, and to our knowledge, there have been no cards submitted or requests to pull any of the items.
Is there a move the consent calendar?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Protem Garpedian.
Okay. Now, if we can move.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Now, there is also, there is a hearing, which, there has been a request to move to date certain. We can do a quick vote if there's consensus on that, or we can move on to.
That's item 9A.
That is 9A under hearings.
Right.
So, there is one card, there is one card submitted on that.
Okay, let's hear the speaker first before we take the action.
Redite them into the record.
9A is a hearing, Director of Community Development regarding 520 North Central Avenue, variance for a ground-level parking garage, combined Stage 1 and 2 design review, and instrument imposing covenants on real property. This is to be continued to November 6, 2018.
I'm sorry, November 20th.
November 20th, I apologize, it's November 20th.
Okay, Sir Grant Michaels. Three minutes, Mr. City Clerk.
Good evening, my name is Grant Michaels. If the issue has been continued, I'll speak at that time. I was interested in seeing the staff report.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Need a motion.
We need a motion.
Motion and vote.
I will move to continue this item without further notice to November 20, 2018.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Protem Garpedian.
Yes. So next item is.
Next item is action item under 8A, and then we can return to.
Item 5.
Council.
Yes.
Item 8A is City Manager regarding legislative update, wrap-up of 2718 state legislative session, and A1 is a motion to note and file a report.
Mr. Mayor Protem, Garpedian, members of the City Council, I'm going to go directly to Ms. Powers, who is celebrating her birthday today. So happy birthday to her. That's not the reason why we're moving it up, sir, as you know. Our lobbyists from Sacramento are here and need to catch a flight back to Sacramento, hence we ask for the item to be moved up, so thank you for doing that. With that, we will go to Ms. Powers.
So we're going to sing happy birthday at the end of the meeting for you, so.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Garpedian, members of council staff. This report is being provided to you tonight as a wrap-up of the two-year legislative session. The city has been tracking about 120 bills since the session began. Legislature had until August 31 of this year to pass bills out of both houses, and from there, the governor had the month of September to sign or veto any bills that made it to his desk. In the body of your report, you'll see all the bills that Glendale was either supporting, opposing, or watching closely that made it to the governor's desk. There was 46 of them, and it's interesting to note that out of the 46 bills, out of the ones that the city took a position on, we were in sync with the governor about 60% of the time, and that number seems higher than it's been in the past, so that's a good sign. With us today are state lobbyists from Emanuel's Jones &amp; Associates. So first, Kira Emanuel Ross is going to come and talk to you about some of the bills of note that made it to the governor's desk and the governor took action on, and then David Jones is going to talk to you about the legislative session ahead, which will start in December, and then staff will be here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Garpedian and council members.
Good evening.
Kira Ross with Emanuel's Jones &amp; Associates. We had a productive day today. We had conversations with all of you, as well as with a number of your staff, going over the issues that occurred this year, as well as looking forward to next year. On that note, I'd love to thank your stellar staff for all their hard work this year. We had a lot of good phone calls back and forth and took a lot of action that was very helpful. Also, I'd like to thank Senator Portantino and Assemblymember Friedman and their staff for all their work and help in the legislature this year. Some of the key highlights of the year, I'll start with the state budget. We had budget expenditures of about $141 billion. That created also about $15.9 billion in state reserves going forward. The main budget bill also included about $5 billion allocation for SB1 transportation funds, and about $2.2 billion for local cities and counties, as well as $500 million for emergency aid for homeless. That $500 million included about $250 million to continuums of care, of which you are one, about $100 million to continuums of care based on the proportion of the statewide total of the point-in-time count for homeless, and about $150 million directly to cities with very high populations and high homeless counts. The budget also included about $1.4 billion in allocations of cap and trade dollars that will be available for competitive, and some competitive grants and others are just direct grants, and it included some of the funding from Proposition 68, as well as some funding for tax credit extensions in June. I would also note some of the major legislative headlines for the year. There are about 2,600 bills introduced in this year. Nearly 1,000 of those moved through the two houses in the last week of session. The governor signed about just over 1,000 bills and vetoed about 200 bills with a signature rate of about 83.5%. It's fairly typical for this governor, it's about the rate that we've seen this entire time in the last eight years. Some of the major issues that made headlines this year, there were a package of bills on water conservation, SB 100, which dealt with renewable energy, bail reform, SB 10. Net neutrality was taken up as an issue, and of course, the governor had SB 901, which was both the main bill, SB 901, and a package of about 29 bills, all related to the wildfire prevention, vegetation management, and recovery that went back to the major wildfires that we saw this last year. Housing started off with a bang with the introduction of SB 827, that would have required local jurisdictions to provide developers with transit-rich housing bonuses. We also saw two bills that relate to regional housing needs assessment, ARENA, and we saw a number of bills on accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, that did not actually get to the governor's desk, but we do expect that issue to come back in the next year. Also coming back were a number of, a couple of other issues that were of major importance but did not make it all the way through the process, but we do expect to see next year. And that includes grid regionalization, a bill on clean drinking water and funding for small communities that don't have it in California. And then, we also dealt with a bill that was actually signed by the governor with shutting off drinking water in California. Finally, in the public safety realm, we had a couple of bills, one of the bills on use of force that did not make it to the governor, and then another bill on transparency that we'll be looking at over the next year. With that, David's going to look forward to what's coming up this next year.
Thank you, council members and staff. We did have a series of great meetings with your staff today, and I got the task of looking forward. Kira unfortunately did give more, some of my presentation away, so I will skip those portions of things that we're going to see next year. Page seven of your 17-page report includes the three Sacramento-based legislative initiatives dealing with rent notice increase notification, repurposing of stranded bonds, and tax incentives for Section 8 housing. We've already engaged with the staffs of your legislators and started working on getting those pieces put into the process, so we've engaged with your staff and with the staffs of both Senator Portantino and Councilwoman Friedman. Next year is going to be, of course, a new governor, so with the changes of administration will come a whole raft of new programs. We're probably not going to see many changes in the short term, regardless of who becomes elected, because it will take a while for the next governor to put together a budget, probably by May, so we'll be looking to May to see what the policies are. We're expecting that the legislature will return to 2/3s majorities in both houses. We're seeing the Senate slip down to 26 instead of 27 with a recall, and so we're expecting them to have that. The next governor will again have to deal with the PERS crisis, so we know that this last governor did a major revision of PERS in 2012. Those reforms aren't going to be significant enough to take care of many, many of the smaller agencies, so we'll look to that. As Kira mentioned, water again will be big. The question before this next governor is tunnels or tunnel? We anticipate that project probably will, most likely will shrink to one single tunnel, which will cut the cost in half, so we'll be watching that. Kira did mention clean drinking water and a potential water tax, something that is very troubling to us, and so we'll continue to keep an eye on if that resurfaces again and make sure we are aware of those proposals. The future of high-speed rail, again, that is something that's going to be probably revisited by the next governor. Neither of the governor candidates seem entirely enthusiastic about the current proposal, so we anticipate that there will be a re-looking at, maybe an audit, of the current revenue stream for high-speed rail. Popular amongst all of us is discussions about redevelopment 2.0, bringing back some sort of economic development tool. That clearly is going to be on the agenda. I think it's going to be a longer discussion than, you know, one year, so we'll be watching that to see what that looks like. It certainly will not look like the old redevelopment, so we'll have to see what elements are going to be part of that. Certainly, housing and land use are going to be, continue to be a major focus. Remember, there was a 15-bill package two years ago, continues to be a crisis in many parts of the state, so we'll be watching that. Another issue that's emerging, we think, is going to be cybersecurity. So with data breaches and other concerns about meddling in elections, I think cybersecurity is going to emerge as a larger issue. Kira, I think, mentioned police use of force. They're going to be looking at use of deadly force for public safety agencies. Large concern to police agencies on what the legislature would do with that in determining when and if police force was used, so we'll be watching that very closely. Sales tax and tax reform in general. We know that the Newsom administration is interested in a bigger picture look at the current tax system, and so we anticipate that will be big. There was a bill last year, SCA 20, dealing with internet sales. It would have the revenue from those sales go directly to where the point, the package was delivered, not the current point into the county pool, so that discussion on sales tax in general and where does it go will be a big one. And lastly, with all this, there's the backdrop of rumors of a recession in 2019, so we've kept on hearing the drumbeat from economists and others that we may be facing a significant recession coming up sometime soon. So with the PERS problem, we anticipate many local agencies will have a very difficult time grappling with a reduction in revenues. And with that, I know, I thank you, I want to thank you for moving our item up, we appreciate that, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Two quick questions for you. Looking ahead, the new legislative sessions, item 2, repurposing outstanding redevelopment subordinate taxable tax allocation bonds for affordable housing. If you can quickly touch on that, as well as the landlord property tax rebate reduction for Section 8 participation.
Sure. When the legislature ended redevelopment, many agencies like yours knew that redevelopment was going to be coming to an end, so in 2011, your agency issued bonds. The legislature, in its divine wisdom, didn't want to let people that issued bonds late in the day spend those bond proceeds, so there was a deal cut. Based on when you issued your bond in that, in 2011, how much of those proceeds you could use? They wanted you to spend X percentage of, you issued them in January, you got a bigger percent. If you issued them, I don't know when we issued ours, April. We issued ours in April, we got a smaller percent we could issue, leaving an excess amount that they wanted us to de-feas. So instead, our agency has $20 million that is sitting there that we're currently paying debt service on, continuing to pay debt service on, and the request is that we would repurpose these, this $20 million for affordable housing in the community. We're not alone, there are several other agencies around the state that are interested in having this opportunity. The need for affordable housing funding is critical, and if we were able to get the legislature to go along with it, we could produce a significant amount of housing units in Glendale if we were given the authority to do so.
Mr. Garpedian, if I could just add, those bonds are in addition to the housing bonds that we are, we're getting approved now. So those are, that non-housing series, the idea is allow us to use them for affordable housing where we have a crisis.
The property tax rebate is a proposal that your staff has come up with, trying to
get the landlords that have current units, give them an incentive to let their units go to Section 8 housing voucher holders. So it is an attempt, right now, there's, the federal government funds and issues Section 8 housing vouchers from HUD. People that get these housing vouchers can find no, very few landlords that will take them. So this is trying to put some incentive for those people that have a voucher, can't find a place to live, to have some incentive for a landlord potentially to allow, with this incentive, would encourage them to allow a Section 8 holder to have that rental unit.
Okay, thank you. There are no questions?
Yes, sir. One of the ideas that we, and we had meetings throughout the day, Mr. Jones and Kira, and one of the ideas that came up in our meeting was a voluntary incentive program for landlords to offer one or more of their rental units at a reduced rate in return for a tax credit from the state. And you said that is a rather innovative idea, it hasn't yet germinated yet, but it's certainly something that I'm interested in pursuing, and I know, I see a representative from Senator Portantino's office in the audience, and hopefully, if we dig into this a little bit, there might be some news out there. So if you hear anything bubbling up in Sacramento, please let us know so we can get behind it and throw our momentum behind the effort.
Absolutely, I took good notes, so, and we'll be meeting with Senator Portantino's ledge director next week after the election, so we'll make sure we bring that up with Anthony Molina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to note and file? So moved? Roll call, please. Thank you very much.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian. Mayor Protem Garpedian.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item, we return back to item number 5, which is the City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments?
Aye.
Councilmember Devine.
Okay. First, I would like to ask staff for an update on the greener Glendale plan. Are we, what, where are we in that process?
Mayor Protem, Garpedian, members of the City Council, Councilmember Devine, your question couldn't be, I think, more timely in terms of, staff actually met yesterday on the plan itself, and we periodically meet, as you are aware. The plan was completed in 2012, and council has received updates on that plan at different junctures in that process. The last update, I believe, the council received was last October, if I'm not mistaken, on the plan. It is time for us to update the entire plan, based on legislation that's out there, based on information that we have been able to gather in the last eight, six years, excuse me, and so it's very timely for us to update the plan. So we're in the process between. So we're in the process between Community Development and Glendale Water and Power and my office, City Manager's Office, to look to see who within Community Development is going to now oversee this plan, with the idea that we would have a consultant, and we're looking for grant funds, we're in that process, to be able to pay for the, the plan to be updated. And that's how it was, it was done before. It was done by way of grants before, and we hope to do the same thing this time around, and go through that entire process of updating, updating the plan, because it should happen every five or so years, and it's very timely based on legislation. So, excuse me, we'll be before you soon to give you an update of, of the status of where we are with that, and staff is working on moving forward with that item.
So, but we have no date certain as to when that will come back?
Not at this time. Not at this time, but it's, it's a priority. It's something that we have started focusing on and know that we have to update it. So it's something that will get done sooner rather than later. At least the process will start.
Okay, thank you, because I think we've, we've all gotten questions about that, the updating of that plan, so thank you very much. A couple of congratulations are due. There were a lot of events this week, and one that I attended was the City Zone One in Glendale, the flag football finals for the middle school program. It was amazing. I always say that if I have to find parking, if I can't find parking, it must be a successful event, and this was. There were so many parents there with their kids, and just the enthusiasm was fantastic. So thank you and congratulations to our parks, community parks, and recs, and Grant Michaels is back there. So thanks to all of the ONEC, wherever you are, great job. I also want to do, congratulate Kenneth Village Business Association for hosting a Halloween trick-or-treat evening. It was fantastic, families there with their kids, it was a safe night out. The kids got candy and got to put on their costumes and take pictures, and I just want to congratulate the, the members of that association in Kenneth Village that is bringing enthusiasm and wonderful activities to that part of our city. Kenneth Village is very charming, if you haven't been over there, and they're really kind of getting more into working together and bringing more activities to the neighborhood, and it's great to see the neighbors walking to the village, actually not driving cars and parking, but walking, which means that the neighborhoods are being involved. I also attended the celebration of the 100th anniversary of Home Minute Men here in Glendale, and it's actually all over the world. A hundred years in, in existence with activities for, for youth and adults. And I just want to say that one of my fondest memories of Home Minute Men was when they invited me to go to Armenia for the Pan-Armenian Games for two weeks, and it will be to spend time with the, the leadership of that organization, with the athletes in that organization. It was an honor and a privilege, and it's an experience that I, I will never forget. And finally, this is an announcement from the Northwest Glendale Homeowners. They're having their annual shredding event. So on Saturday, this coming Saturday, from 9:00 to noon, the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association will hold its annual shredding day in the parking lot of, at Grandview Presbyterian Church. It's open to everyone who wants to dispose of confidential papers. A professional shredding truck will be on site with an attached video camera, so you can actually see the shredding take place. So if you're interested, go to the Grandview Presbyterian Church, I believe that's on Kenneth, and membership to, of the association members get three boxes free and pay $5 per box afterwards. Non-members, it's $5 for, I guess, three boxes. So please, if you're interested, if you have papers around the house and you need to have them shredded, go over to the Grandview Presbyterian Church and have those professionally shredded. And that's all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Divine. Najarian, if you have anything to...
Well, let me just add, we had a great 25th anniversary gala for the Glendale Youth Alliance, and I know we were all, all of us were there attending the good work that they've done. Glendale Youth Alliance is an organization that helps train and develop our youth for productive and successful jobs, and it starts from clearing brush on the hillsides all the way to office training and entry into professional level positions. So congratulations to all the hard work, 25 years seems like yesterday.
Thank you. Councilmember Zagajanian?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Well, there are so many events that we all attend, and in the interest of time, I'm going to refrain from talking about all of them, just a couple of them. Philippine Heritage Month celebration was a great event we all attended, as well as Home Minute Men's 100th Anniversary, which always they put out a good, good program together, great organization. Also, most importantly, I want to remind everyone that next Tuesday, November 6th is Election Day. Yes, we do have an election in Glendale. There is no council elections, but we have a measure on the ballot, which is the most important, I think, item on that, on that, on that ballot. I want to encourage everyone to get out and vote. It takes only a few short minutes. If you have your ballot, fill out your ballot and send them out. Measure S is, is very interesting this year, that if you look at your booklet that you receive, the sample ballots, if you go to the polls and vote, it's different than the actual ballot that you receive at home. So make sure you look for Measure S and vote for Measure S, any way you feel like, you know how this council feels about it, but find, find Measure S and vote for Measure S this coming elections, and participate, because this is a right that many countries, they fight for having such a right, and we have this right here, and unfortunately, not many people participate. So I encourage everyone to participate in elections next Tuesday.
With one more thing, I'm sorry, I forgot. Maybe the city clerk can help me with that. This Saturday, we have a celebration of Dia de los Muertos. Do you have the details on that, Arnie?
There's actually a couple of family-friendly events going on this weekend. One of them is the Kiwanis Duck Splash, which will be taking place at the, at Verdugo Park in the morning. That'll be taking place from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It's an event that's fun for the whole family. City organizations participate in it. And then after that, after 3:00 p.m., starting at 4:00 p.m. on Artsakh Avenue, formerly Maryland, between Wilson and Broadway, will be the second City of Glendale Dia de los Muertos celebration with music and arts and crafts for kids and food. There's a fusion Mexican food vendor who will be making falafel burritos, shawarma tacos, and elotes, emerging of all cultures and something for everyone. So we encourage everyone to come out. That'll be from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Artsakh Avenue.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Also, on a lighter note, I want to ask staff to look into, maybe, this is, I think, something that we all have been waiting for, maybe bring in an ice skating rink in Glendale for this upcoming New Years and holidays and Christmas time, see if we can place one anywhere in the city, and take a look at it and see if it's feasible to do it this year. I know it's kind of a short notice, but I think that's something that we're missing in the city.
Second on that?
Is there a second on that?
Sure.
Okay.
We'd be happy to look at it. The timeframe is, as you stated, Mayor Protem Garpetti, is short, but we will do our best to see if it's feasible in terms of space and availability and cost, but we'll look at that and bring information back to you.
Okay. What's next, mister?
Next, Item Six is the Community Event Announcements portion. We have one community event announcement and then three-minute general public comment cards for anyone who wishes to limit their public comments to five minutes, or rather, to three minutes rather than five minutes and wait till the end of the meeting.
Okay. How many cards do I have tonight? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine?
Haven't I believed?
I have, I have nine cards. One is a special event and eight public speaking. Since Item Nine is canceled, I'm going to allow all of them, because usually, I think the rule was to, to only, yeah, accept five. So going to the first speaker, Arda Chakyan, from Senator Anthony Portentino's office.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Garpetti and councilmembers and city staff.
Good evening.
My name is Arda Chakyan. As you know, I'm Senator Portentino's district representative in the city of Glendale. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Health Festival Planning Committee to share information about this weekend's free event. The Ninth Annual Glendale Health Festival will take place on Saturday, November 3rd, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, November 4th, from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Pacific Community Center located at 501 South Pacific Avenue. This is a free festival open to the entire community. The following are a few of the services that will be offered. Free complete health evaluations and medical consultations, flu shots and mammograms from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., hearing tests from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, onsite drug disposal, dental and vision services, including kits like camera screening for ages six months to six years. Eyeglasses will also be made available onsite. Free healthy lunches will be provided, and there will be fun activities for kids and families. For more information and a full list of services that are being offered, please visit glendalehealthfestival.com or amsc.com. Thank you.
Question? Sure.
Yes, Councilmember.
Is this a two-day event this year?
It is a two-day event.
First time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. So people should realize that it's Saturday and Sunday, not just one day. Are you providing transportation from different sections of the city, areas?
I know that there will be off-site parking, and there will be buses that will be bringing all the participants.
Okay, and that information is on our website?
Yes, it is all available online.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Diana Dykes, followed by Gabrielle Gamboa.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. My name is Diana Dykes, and I'm here to speak, asking you to really think about opposing rent control, and I'll tell you why. The gentleman that spoke, I don't know his name, that was discussing about the HUD programs and housing, I think that's a fabulous idea. I have had a HUD person in, in one of my units for 22 years, and another one that's a vet, and his family for eight years, and I think that that is a great thing to do. And I think homeowners or apartment owners would really be, would look forward to having maybe a tax break and giving these people a place to live. I know I've enjoyed doing it for all these years. I know that there's a shortage in California, but I don't think rent control is the answer. Rent control will reduce the quality and the quantity of rental housing in Glendale. It restricts, as a homeowner and as an apartment owner, what I can do for that building. You know, if I'm restricted in my funds, in, I can't fix everything or make it as nice as I would, as a place that I would like to live in, and the maintenance would be deferred, and I just don't think it would be as nice of a place. Rent control will also make Glendale a lot more expensive, and you will find a decline in the values and the properties in Glendale. And with these declines come local revenues that will decline, and that means that this will jeopardize millions of dollars that are dedicated to our schools and city services. Rent control also jeopardizes the livelihood of people who invest in Glendale, such as myself, my mom, my uncle. We're all immigrants. We've all worked very hard to have what we have. We don't have a pension. We've put everything into owning, you know, an apartment building, and, and then also, I think you're taking away from people that can do work on these buildings, because you will have deferred. And at the very end, rent control also, there's a lot of administrative costs, and the property must be registered. You'll find a detailed on rental property that has to be collected. I mean, overall, I don't think that you will be doing Glendale a service, and it's a beautiful place to live. I think you will only find a decline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gabrielle Gamboa, followed by Mark Marcarion.
Hello, my name is Gabe Gamboa. I spoke last week. Thank you for letting me come by and talk again. One of the fallacies behind the idea of rent control is that rent never goes down, it always goes up. One of the things I mentioned is that during times of recession or just local difficulty, well, all of us who are a little older remember all the aerospace jobs that disappeared in like the mid-'90s. During those times, rents actually go down. Now, I understand your viewpoint and what you're trying to ascertain in these, in these discussions and in the discussions you have together. You have one group of people saying, you know, I don't raise my rents, rents aren't going up. You have another group of people basically saying they're going through the roof. As, as city leaders, it's kind of difficult to understand what's truly happening. I think real data is what's important. Let me provide you a wonderful example. If I could hand this over to you. This is my favorite example of really what's going on with rents in Los Angeles and Glendale. I downloaded the rent control ordinance that the Glendale Tenants Union proposed. This is a copy of it. I downloaded it directly, I'm sorry, I printed out the whole thing, I didn't make enough copies, I only made five. It basically says on paragraph C, that I circled in red, that rents have gone up 32% between the years 2000 and May 2017. I circled it there. Now, let's do some simple math. 32% over approaching two decades. To get a 32% increase over 17 years, that is an annualized increase of under 1.7%. However many people can come and say, my rent went up this, my rent went up that, that is a tiny, tiny increase. Now, I think for this reason, year after year, the Glendale Tenants Union has been trying to mobilize votes to, to get rent control on the ballot and have been unable to, because quite frankly, however emotional the issue may be, the outrage is not out there. Glendale, as of 2017, had 203,000 residents. The Glendale Tenants Union rightly says that the 60% are tenants. That means there's 160,000 tenants, and they're able to get a little over 3,000 signatures. When you consider that 10 to 20% of all signatures get thrown out because people sign twice or people sign as Mickey Mouse, it really translates into a very tiny percentage of the people who rent and an utterly tiny percent of the people who actually live in Glendale. Please consider, this is their data. I'm not citing a study out of one city or the other. This is their data. Anybody could cite a study. You can bring a study that says that the sun goes around the earth. This is the data provided by the Glendale Tenants Union, proving that rents are not going up.
Mark Marcarion, followed by Vic Marcarion, followed by Mike Mohill.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers and city members. I'm an as hard-working individual as any, any one of you. I do work 40 to 60 hours a week to support my family and my children. I started investing in Glendale and properties years ago to make sure that I have a retirement of some sort. I'm against rent control, and here's why. I don't have any rollovers in my rent, in my tenants. My tenants have been with me for years. Obviously, this is a recorded session, so all of my tenants could see what I'm talking about. My tenants have been with me for years because I'm not gouging them. I don't understand where the, where the three to four times increases that some were claiming last week that we're getting on their rent increases, and there's got to be a reason for that, or maybe there's a one bad apple. But we cannot punish all of us just because one individual is punishing their tenants by raising the rents every year three to four times or doubling their rents all the My tenants asked me, honestly, today, I was, I was with one of my tenants, he still asked me, do you have any other units that my family members or my friends could rent? I have a lot of tenants, and all of their family members are with me, so I don't understand the logic, because some of these people that are complaining that we're gouging them. Obviously, none of the landlords that are here are the people that are gouging, because it seems like these people are preaching to the choir, and we're not that type of landlords. I keep my properties up, and I tell all my tenants, if I cannot live in that property, I will not rent to you. And I'm honest about that. I spend a lot of money on my properties. I spend a lot of money on my properties. If there's a new purchase, I did, I had a new purchase this year, five months ago, I paid four, five times the value that I normally would have paid, you know, 10 years ago. So, if there was a higher rent for that property, and all these years, you know, last two or three years, I've only had one new tenant because I had one new property. But all of them, again, stay with me, and if I charge a little bit more for that new property that I renovated, I deserve so. Those who cannot afford Glendale, or some of the newer properties that are being built, they should go for another property, or another city. I don't, I don't live in Beverly Hills if I can't afford Beverly Hills homes. I live in Glendale because I could afford Glendale home. I don't buy the cars that I cannot afford. So, we need to live within our means. I believe that was all my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker is Vic Marcariyan, followed by Mike Mohill, followed by Michael Kapkanis.
I'm the better-looking guy. So, anyway. Dear councilmembers, I know, I'm here to share with you, just like last week, I'm against rent control, and I want to tell you guys why. It's going to hurt the tenants, the landlords, the city, Glendale, and I have few solutions for you guys, okay? And I'm going to go fast with this. I know the council member, it's a tough decision for you guys to make sure the tenants and the landlords are happy. I know there are landlords here and tenants here, they want to reach to a solution. I've seen some of the tenant union come here almost every week. They collected signatures, I believe it was like around 4,000, just like that guy said. They don't represent 203,000 citizens in Glendale. My brother, he rented for many years. He worked his butt off, I worked my butt off. This is our retirement plan. I woke up every night to go to work for graveyard and went to school. I worked full-time and went to school to collect, to save money, to get, I love my tenants, and the rents are low. And sometimes we increase it, we have reasons, okay, for increasing rents. But eventually, our rents are 200 to 500, my rents anyway, 200 to 500 below market value. I want to go, one of the tenant union last week was saying that it won't affect the price. I just want to let you guys know how it's going to affect the price. Take a 16-unit apartment building with 1,000 square feet, $800 rent right now in Glendale, and that property with no rent control, 16 units, going to worth over $6 million. With a rent control, it's going to be about $3 million. That's $35,000 loss for city Glendale finances. It's going to affect your finances, you're going to affect the schools, okay? And also, they were coming here for a few months, and I never seen any solid evidence from them showing what the, what, who's gouging it, those two, three times, who's increasing two, three times. No solid evidence. I heard last week from Annette speaking in here, and she raised that question, I admire you, Divine, that, "Where is the evidence that you guys have? City Glendale been over 100 years with no rent control. How come all of a sudden, we have rent control issue right now arising?" And I just, because of the time, and here, you guys are making a lot of us emotional decisions than logical. We have to see the facts. We have to sit down with the landlord, we have to sit down with the tenants, and we come to a solution. And the way to have some of the solution is you guys to have to increase the supply. Some of the properties are 10 units in Glendale now, they are our one zone. Why do you guys have that restriction? If it burns in two years, they don't fix it, it's going to be low inventory. And there is also, you guys can work with Habitat for Humanity Salvation Army and other ones, like, we're talking. Measure S can be funding some of those things. We can, like I said, councilmembers, we all can sit down and reach a solution. I respectfully request from you guys to vote, you know, against rent control.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, followed by Michael Kapkanis. Good evening.
And the viewing audience, my name is Mike Mohill. Measure S, the so-called Glendale Quality of Life and Essential Services Protection Measure, a proposed 3/4% sales tax increase. Measure S is at a minimum a $30 million bailout scheme for reckless spending by our politicians and union bosses. This new tax, on top of the utilities users' tax passed five years ago, gives the city a total of $54 million annually in new taxes paid by local residents. There's no guarantee that any of these monies will be spent for the direct benefit of the community, such as new parks and open space, low-income and senior housing. A 2/3 vote by Glendale voters would have given council direction as to where the $30 million would be spent. But council knew they could not get 2/3 vote by the voters, so instead, they chose a simple majority with no concrete directions. For whose protection is Measure S? Homeowners, renters, or small business owners? No. It's about saving outrageous salaries and retirement pension benefits of our union workforce. Yes on Measure S committee includes police officer Joe Allen, whose 2017 base salary and benefits was $177,000, and is a board member of the Glendale Police Association. Patricia Larrigan, Glendale Police Officer, retired, and Rafi Manukian, city treasurer. Both Mr. Allen and Mr. Manukian will receive an outrageous retirement pension at a young age. Officer Allen will receive 90%, mind you, of his last year annual salary for life. And Mr. Manukian will receive 75% of his last year's salary for life. Measure S campaign headquarters is located inside the offices of the Glendale Police Officers Association at 50112 East Wilson Avenue, Suite 309, Glendale. Police, Fire, Management, General Employees, and IBEW all benefit with outrageous unsustainable salaries and retirement pension benefits, more than the average social security recipient, and have each contributed thousands of dollars to the Yes on Measure S campaign. Additionally, their association names all appear on the Yes on Measure S mailers. Why, may I ask? What organizations contribute thousands of dollars to a political campaign if they did not directly benefit from it? Please vote no on Measure S. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next speaker is Michael Kapkanis, followed by Tony Passarella.
Getting old. I would like to, I'm a landlord.
Could you hold his time real quick, stop his time?
Yeah, we have not heard.
Just one second, please. I think there are, some of our audiences walking out, and I want to give you a fair time.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to start by reading a text message that just came into me at, I believe it was 6:45. "Mike, I don't know what the bill was, will be for this latest plumbing crisis, but please know if I can share the costs. I don't think I'm culpable in any way for whatever the hell caused it, but you and Amanda are good landlords, and I'd be happy to pitch in." That's from one of my tenants that just came in. So, not an evil person. I'm a landlord, that's not by definition evil. I'd like to say that, my name is Michael Kapkanis, I'm 62 years old. I've invested my entire life savings in the city of Glendale. My wife and I are well-educated, hard-working, and self-employed. As self-employed, we don't have a paid vacation, we don't have paid health insurance, and we certainly don't have a pension. Rather, our entire, the entire culmination of two lives of hard work is tied up in our properties in Glendale. Our entire life savings and our retirement plan is in your hands. I would like to highlight the absolutely regressive nature of price controls. We're at a classic supply and demand bind with a shortage of supply. The shotgun approach of stifling rents for a growing economic powerhouse like Glendale would have many onerous, unintended, and negative consequences. Homelessness and housing affordability are often used to justify price-fixing rents. Homelessness is not even addressed by rent control amendments, and does, and therefore has absolutely zero effect. I don't understand the connection. Secondly, affordability, perversely is made worse by monkeying with price fixing when we need to attack the problem at its root, which is supply. As a reminder, price is not the problem. Rather, price is a symptom of a problem, and that problem is a lack of supply. We need to encourage more housing. Who would hear, who here would invest their life savings in an apartment building in a rent-controlled area? Clearly, price fixing will discourage investment in new housing. It will disincentivize cash-strapped landlords for maintenance and improvements, locking existing tenants into often squalid conditions. It will slowly squeeze the city's tax rolls as rent-controlled properties lose value and are not desirable for purchase and improvement. The long-term net result being less housing of lower quality in a poorer municipality. So, what kind of solution is this? While I have the strong liberal inclinations, often willing to fight the good fight in the face of stiff odds, I am also practical and rational. I say that if society wants to cure the problem of housing affordability, the best course is attacking it head-on, not lashing out at the free market, punishing entrepreneurs and builders, but guiding it, leading it. If you only beat people for the results, you may not like what you get. You should expect avoidance, obfuscation, recalcitrance, and cheating, and all accomplished at great effort and expense. Why not lead and encourage the change we seek? Vouchers so that the less well-off are not trapped in old dilapidated conditions. Tax incentives to encourage development of lower-income housing, you know, so that developers actually want to help instead of fleeing to more favorable markets, which they will do. A best track of building and safety.
Your time is up. If you wrap up, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. What I'd like to do, if you don't mind, please, is to recognize the other landowners in the city of Glendale who may not have a chance to speak. Would anybody who is a property owner in Glendale, please make your presence known? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tony Passarella, followed by Jenna. I'm going to try Zwiddel. If I'm not, if I'm mispronouncing her last name, I apologize. Go ahead.
Good evening, council, staff members and viewing audience. You'll be happy to know I'm not talking about rent control tonight. I first appeared in city council chambers and spoke, I don't know how many years ago it was, Mr. Najarian was the only one on council at the time, was smart meter issue. So, I joined a group, we were railing against that, we lost that fight. And I think the next thing I remember was the closing down of the gun show. So, I spoke out against that. I didn't think that was right, lost that. And then, I think was, the next one was a cell tower, I think in Fremont Park, and I didn't like that idea, okay? Well, I have a different slant on things tonight. Get up in Saturday morning, and like most Saturday mornings, I go down to Foxy's and have breakfast, and I go down under the freeway on Pacific. So, lo and behold, what do I see Saturday morning on Pacific, just under the freeway, one of those caution banners that I've been asking for, for the last four or five months? So, to my pleasant surprise, I continue down Pacific, and there's another one, and there's another one, and there's another one, and there's another one. And so, I go to Foxy's, and I come back up, and this time, I count them. There was no less than 12 caution banners on Pacific, and I have to say, they look great, the spacing, in my opinion, is perfect, the messaging, the repetitive messaging with the southbound messaging of "Slow down" is perfect, in my opinion. It's all I asked for, and I don't know whether that was in the works before I started railing about it, or because I had, I'd like to know that I had something to do with that, maybe you just got tired of me coming over here. But tonight, for the very first time, very first time, I'm giving you thanks. I'm applauding you. And here I am. So, I don't know who all is more responsible than, so, probably city manager beers.
Staff, manager, and the staff.
It was us. It was all us. It was all of us. So, the workers, the guys who put it up, whoever, thank, thank you so much, and I'm sure the people on that, that live on that stretch will be grateful. And my hope is that it make a difference, and it will, in fact, get people to slow down and save, who knows, an accident, a life, whatever. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella. Mr. Moh, take notes, please. Just kidding. All right. Next speaker is Jenna. Jenna Zwiddel, if I'm, again.
My name is Jenna Zwickel. You're close.
I was close.
I'm a student at Glendale High, and I'm here to talk about the opening of marijuana dispensaries in the city. I'm a student, and I see what happens to the other students who, who smoke marijuana, and it's not, the effects that it has on them are not good. I've seen countless students who come up to me after we've taken a test, they're like, "Oh, I bombed that so bad, I'm so high," and it's not okay, and it's not how everything should be, anything like that. It shouldn't, if dispensaries were made to be opened, sorry, I cannot speak English. When, if dispensaries were to be opened in Glendale, I feel that the more accessible it would be, the worse the problems would get at my school, and it's already as bad as it is, and there's already so many problems. And I just don't think it'd be helpful if they opened more. Thanks.
Thank you. That was the last card for this portion of oral communication. What's next, please?
Can this be a five-minute portion?
No, this is a three-minute portion.
So, A B is interim fire chief regarding executing promissory notes with the city of Alhambra, the city of Burbank, and the Hollywood Burbank Airport, amending a professional services agreement with Northrop Grumman Systems Corporation, and executing an agreement with U.S. Digital Designs, Inc. B1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a city of Glendale promissory note with the city of Alhambra. Two is a motion authorizing city manager to execute a city of Glendale promissory note with the city of Burbank. Three is a motion authorizing city manager to execute a city of Glendale promissory note with the Hollywood Burbank Airport. Four is a motion amending the current PSA between the city of Glendale and Northrop Grumman Systems Corporation to provide a new computer-aided dispatch interface to the U.S. Digital Designs Fire Station Alerting System. Five is a motion authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with U.S. Digital Designs, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $54,205, and thereafter authorizing purchasing administrator to issue for a purchase order for the life of the equipment. And six is resolution appropriating $48,912.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Garpetian, members of the city council. Thank you, Bill Lynch, interim fire chief. Tonight, before you have an item regarding, back in 2017, we received approval to upgrade our Northrop Grumman dispatching software that we utilize to notify fire stations when they get an emergency response. In doing this, it's required our neighboring agencies that we dispatched, the three listed here, to upgrade their software as well. What this resolution will do is allow us to purchase the upgrade software on our end at the Rodrigo Dispatch Center, as well as the neighboring agencies to upgrade their software to allow that connection, and ask that you approve this.
Okay. Question? Motion?
I'll move the item.
Do you have a question, Mr.? Oh, no. Okay. Roll call, please.
Sorry, who's second did he?
All right.
Who was the second on that?
Councilmember Agajanian. Councilmember Divine.
Thank you, got it. Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garpetian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item, C, is Public Works and Police Chief regarding sole source procurement of an armored vehicle for the Glendale Police Department. C1 is a motion authorizing and purchasing, the purchasing administrator to purchase a Lenko Bearcat Medevac Armored Law Enforcement Vehicle from Lenko Industries, Inc. Two is a resolution appropriating $35,000.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council, Carl Pavletas, police chief. This evening, before you, we're before you to ask for your authorization to purchase an armored vehicle. We currently have one armored vehicle, it's approximately 15, 15 years old, and it's used for specialized operations. Part of what we do as a police department is we look at things that have happened across the events, and when we've done safety updates in front of council or joint meetings with the school board, we've discussed safety and the tools that we would need to do that. So, what we're asking for is to buy a armored vehicle that is equipped with medical equipment onboard, so that when, should the unthinkable happen in Glendale, or a mass casualty incident that...
that not only would we have the ability to move police officers into the situation and cross open ground in dangerous situations, but we'll be able to utilize our joint training with the fire department in order to provide, to bring medical personnel on-site and to evacuate wounded people, again, while crossing, while potentially crossing over ground under circumstances, under which, or under different circumstances, where we would basically have to, to wait to make the situation more stable. The request before you is to purchase it from Lenko. They manufacture specialized police equipment. There are a couple of other manufacturers that do armored cars, but nobody does what they do in terms of what we call a medcap that has the medical, medical equipment onboard, and it's very, it will be similar to the one that we, that we already, that we already have. We had originally budgeted $425,000 in the budget when the final quotation came in, including transportation, it came up at 441. Therefore, we're requesting modification of the budget to issue a, enter into an agreement with Lenko to purchase it, not to exceed $450,000, and then additional $10,000 to provide for upfitting onsite for radios and that type of equipment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, chief. Councilmember Ogjani?
I asked before, but I want to ask, how many people they can ride in the car, and what's the difference between this vehicle and the one which you had before?
The, the current one that we have will accommodate approximately eight people, depending on the amount of gear that comes in. It has no medical equipment or firefighting equipment onboard. The one that we're asking to purchase has both metal equipment and firefighting equipment onboard, so it allows us to go into those types of situations. It is slightly larger, so probably 10 people, and it also allows us, it will, it has gurneys, oxygen, and medical equipment, so it will double up, if you will, as an armored ambulance in a serious situation.
I just want to add something, and then, I know U.S. Army has lots of vehicles are sitting everywhere that they are not using, and maybe the city wants to look, as I said before, to look into it and receive some of those big trucks that they have used. I know you were explaining to me that some of them are very heavy, we can use on the street, but I'm sure they have different type of vehicles they are not using, and they're willing to give it away to open the space where they're sitting somewhere. I, I know I reported before, lots of trucks, and sitting, and dust is all over the trucks, and they don't know what to do with it. So maybe you'll ask them to donate some of them to our fire department and police department.
There actually is a program, they call it the 1033 program, that does allow law enforcement agencies to utilize surplus military vehicles. Some are in better condition than others. We have used that program in the past. We continue to evaluate equipment that comes, if you will, on the market or available for release, and if it's appropriate for our uses, then we'll, we'll enter into agreement to obtain that equipment. And if it's not, we generally, we generally don't.
Thank you. Okay.
Question?
Yes.
You said how many, how many men or women could be, could occupy that vehicle?
The new one, fully equipped, about 10 fully-equipped SWAT personnel.
And some of those would be firemen, firefighters, correct?
Yes. So the way we've started to work with training, in training, that normally it would only be police officers going into one of these situations. Now, in conjunction with the fire department, we've changed the training where we'll provide what we call force protection, so you'd see less police officers onboard, you would see fire personnel, medical personnel with that specialized training onboard. We would make sure that they stay safe while they do what they need to do, so that we can evacuate people out.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ogjani?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garpetian?
Yes. Thank you, chief. Next item, please.
Next item at D is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding unit number nine, automatic generator control and controls replacement for a General Electric LM6000 gas turbine at the Grayson Power Plant. D1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing general manager of Glendale Water and Power to issue a request or proposals.
Okay, before we go to Mr. Zern, I believe councilmember Devine?
Yes.
The statement link.
Thank you. City attorney has advised me that because of my holdings in GE, that I must recuse myself from this agenda item. So with that, I will take leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you coming back for oral communication?
I will.
You are? Okay. Mr. Zern?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. As we enter the, the fall cooler weather season, this is traditionally when we do a lot of our work at Grayson, so that we can have our units, those that are available up and running for the, the hot weather during the summer. So as part of our near, what we're calling our near-term maintenance plan, which we presented to all of you last week, the first item is the replacement of the control system on unit nine. Unit nine is our newest unit. It would also be a unit that we would maintain beyond any decision that's made on, on how or when or if we repower Grayson. The control units began to go out in, in this particular turbine last spring, and after thorough review by GE staff, it was determined that the system, the software had been corrupted. The system, which is no longer, GE no longer provides service, supports it, nor do they even manufacture the, the parts for it any longer, was recommended that we replace it. However, because it was so late in the spring, we did not want to take it out of service. So we were able to get the unit to perform in a very specified manner, not ideal, but at least it got us some generation to help us through the summer. Now, again, as we've entered the cooler weather, we want to look at going out with a request for proposal to see if we can bring a firm in to do this repair. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me, I have a question. I just, crossed my mind, didn't we repair this same unit a while ago?
We did, Mr. Ogjani, and in fact, what we did before is we replaced the catalyst in it. That's something that's part of the emission system, which is required every so often, many, so many hours you have to replace it. During that period of time, we had to re-permit it with AQMD. It was then that we actually discovered the secondary problem as we were going through it. And once we got the catalyst installed and we were all good to go, suddenly it was not functioning properly. That's when we brought GE in to go through it, and we found the secondary problem. But your memory is excellent. We did, we did do that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll move the item. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Ogjani?
Yes.
Devine? Garpeti, Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited in time, is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and the city manager, mayor, refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. First speaker is Roseanne Calaba, followed by R.J. Strauts, Strauts, followed by Frank Gallo.
Good evening, council member, members and staff.
Good evening.
I'm here again opposing rent control. You've had speakers before, and I've said before also, that rent control does not solve the problem of housing. We need more houses. Rent control is socialism. It is welfare. We need a free market so we can have more housing available. We can't, people who have worked so hard to get their property and save for a property, now, when it's time for their retirement, or how are they gonna provide for themselves? The government should not be there to dictate how much people can charge for rent. The free market will tell you how they can charge for rent. The tenants that have been around a long time, they're friends, they're not, they're not, we're not two different sides. We're looking at, if it's not good for one side, it's not good for the other. And it's not good that, that they want government to come in and say, "Hey, I need to have, tell you how much you're gonna rent something." How, how else can you afford to pay your repairs to keep the property going? That is, that is not, it's, it's one-sided. We have not seen any proof of all these rents that are going out of the wall. I have not one thing, haven't seen any proof. And, and it, for years, we've gone, people have, they're our friends, we've, we've, you've heard other people talking. It doesn't stop one way or the other. We get along, we, it's, it's how we make things go back and forth. There's not somebody who says, "Hey, you got something, let me have it." Why? Not supposed to be. You work for what you got, and you know that. And, and that's the way it should be. It's free enterprise. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. R.J., followed by Frank Gallo. Followed by Aram Stepanian. R.J. Followed by Frank Gallo.
My name is Aram Stepanian.
No, Mr. Stepanian. So let's, Mr., let's, let me have Mr. Gallo speak first, because he's ahead of you. Is R.J. here? R.J.? No? I'm gonna put him in the end of the line and call him back again. Mr. Gallo, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem, and city council members. I am here because in the last few weeks, we have seen a lot of people advocating for rent control. They say that landlords are greedy. There might be greedy landlords, but landlords increases, a landlord increase is his or her rent when they, their cost increases. Just in the last year, 82 multi-residential units have been sold in Glendale. When I say multi-residential units, I'm talking about units that are two, two, 20 units in a building. The cheapest property sold for about $670,000, a two-unit, a small square footage. The largest property, an 18-unit building, most of them two units, sold for $9 million. When you look into that, it means that a unit, a rental unit, is going between 335,000 and $500,000 per unit. But those are figures. I have something there that you can look at. I'm gonna talk about a specific building. That's a building that sold in June this year. That building sold for $2.1 million. The funny thing is that the asking price for that building was $1.8 million. It sold right on the corner of Palmer and Glendale. As you can see, the property taxes on that building were $258. The property taxes on that building now, which is an advantage for the city, are $2,100 per month. It went from $258 to $2,100 per month. The mortgage on that building, with a $500,000 down payment, went from $400 roughly to $8,000 per month. Imagine if you are the landlord on that building, the landlord who acquired that building. You have an income per month of $9,700. Now, you have a cost that is about $10,700 per month. That cost does not include water, does not include electricity for the common areas, does not include gardening, it doesn't include maintenance and repairs. So when you look at that at the end of the month, you are looking at probably $2,000 on, in the red. Now, in this building, a one-bedroom, excuse me, a two-bedroom unit is renting for $1,400. Assume that you bought that building. Think that you bought that building. At the end of every month, if you don't raise your rents, you are, you're gonna have a loss of $2,000 at least per month. Wouldn't you consider raising your rent on that $1,400 unit? Now, if you increase the rent by $200, that's a 15% rent increase, and it is a big increase to the renter. But on the other hand, as a landlord, are you gonna be taking a $2,000 loss every month? Is that why you buy, bought the building at a cost of $500,000 down payment? It doesn't make sense, doesn't it? Just something to think. And by the way, I'm gonna pass to you a list of the 82 properties that got sold in the last year. That will give you some idea of how big they are, how all those buildings are, and how much do they have in costs invested there for the landlords. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Aram Stepanian, followed by Mike Mahmouyan, followed by Greg Astorian.
Mayor Sinanian and members of the city council. The proposed rent control measure advocated by some, if enacted, in my opinion, will be a great American tragedy. It is a disregard to our free enterprise system. It promotes socialism and communism, which grounds counter to our American values for free enterprise. It seeks to utilize our private property as if it is a public property without proper compensation. It is plain and simply unconstitutional. Under our Fifth Amendment rights, the just compensation clause provides that private property shall not be taken for public use without just compensation. Rent control measure being proposed is guised as form of eminent domain without just compensation by controlling private property for public use. Rather than uphold our constitutional rights and protect our American values, it seems that politics and self-interest now take precedence. To provide some context, rent control was first introduced after World War I and II in New York City as a temporary, and I want to emphasize that temporary, measure to provide time for veterans to get back on their feet after serving our country abroad. Proponents of rent control, including the Glendale Tenants Union, are not veterans of war. Rather, they are able-bodied individuals who are unwilling to make changes in their lifestyle, who are ignoring the economic, political, and social changes taking place in our country and around the world, and are looking to receive tax-free subsidies at the expense of hard-earned private property owners. We live in America. As such, we have choices. Just as much as we have choices when we shop at a supermarket, go to a restaurant, lease a car, lease a space at a storage facility, we have choices when we rent a residence, freely negotiated and contractually agreed upon for a fee we call rent. Rent control cuts against the basic principle of contracts and makes contract law essentially null and void. If the proponents are not willing or able to share the skyrocketing fixed and variable expenses we home providers incur to keep them in their homes, then they should go where they can afford the rising costs. Operating apartments is very expensive. The costs continue to increase year after year. For example, I have here a letter from the Glendale Water and Power. It provides that over the next four years, the cost of wastewater is set to increase by as much as 95.22%. And let's not forget the long list of taxes. Federal and state income taxes alone account for as much as 45% of net rental income. Now, with the proposed added restrictions of rent control, why would anyone be incentivized to provide proper housing for our community? Why don't the proponents instead ask the government to control and cap the rising cost of gas, food, materials, services, insurance, and federal and state income taxes? Why? Why target those private citizens who work hard and make tremendous sacrifices to provide them a place to live? I and other home providers are not responsible for subsidizing the inefficient economic, political, and social changes taking place. We're a free enterprise society, and as such, supply and demand should be the price setter, not the government. I assure you, if the measure is adopted, services will be diminished, capital improvements will not be made, new construction will stop, and you will see a deterioration in the existing buildings and greater separation and tension between the home providers and the renters. The truth is, we live in America, where free enterprise is the foundation of the American dream. The truth is, rent control is contrary to these American values, and mayors and council members' support for this measure runs counter to our American value of free enterprise. Mr. Vrej Agajanian and Mr. Zarius Stepanian and other council members, support rent control. I say reconsider your support for rent control, and in so doing, answer the question: What about the free American enterprise? What about the home provider's rights?
Mr. Stepanian, your time is up, if you can wrap it up.
I'll be finished in one second. Operating apartments is very expensive, time-consuming, labor-intensive, and fraught with risk. It is a profession that demands more celebration and should be fostered by the government, not entered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Mike MacMurran. Heike MacMurran, sorry. They gave you a new name today, Mr. MacMurran. Followed by Greg Astorian, followed by Kanam Sidi.
Good evening, folks. My name is Heike MacMurran. I am with Glendale Tenants Union. And I don't wanna spend too much time talking about... Talking to these folks, lovely folks that have come over here, that can be easily described in two groups. There are people who literally see renters as second-class citizens and people who are less than. Some of the things that people talk about, I just can't help but say this. The way that they talk about renters reminds me how slave owners talked about slaves. I am not making exaggeration when I say that a promise by a person or a group that has the power and the influence and the money clearly far above your average renter makes a prom... It says that a promise should be held above a law that would provide a basic protection. We are talking about two groups of people, like I said. The general sentiment of against rent control is racist, anti-immigrant, anti-working class, anti-renter, anti-community, and anti-Glendale. It is so because folks who are renters are disproportionately immigrants, working-class folks, people of color, and folks who are low and moderate income. There is a second group, of course, mom-and-pop landlords who are swayed into speaking against rent control, who absolutely would be protected by... If what they say is true, that they're not raising their rents above certain points, if they are taking care of their apartments and taking care of their renters. The rent control ordinance is very much designed to protect the basic decent living of someone who is a landlord. I would like to see hard numbers. They talk about hard numbers. We show them hard numbers. Statistics are very clear that rents in L.A. area, in county area, have gone up 32% since 2000, and incomes for working-class folks and renters have gone down 3%. Statistics of your own city are very clear that affordable housing... We are 19,661 affordable houses short in this city alone. By the rate we're building them, we're talking 300 years until we get all the building done. By your own numbers, 59% of people are rent-burdened in Glendale. That's, again, we're talking tens of thousands of people. So, dear council members, we've been demanding an immediate temporary rent cap for the last two months, and you completely ignored this essential component to protecting tens of thousands of your constituents in crisis. The bad landlords, again, not all, only greedy ones, know that the city is considering rent control and are trying to beat the clock. We need your support to stay in our homes, be a champion of the people, not the corporate landlord robbery by passing an immediate temporary rent cap. Rent control is a measure that will start addressing basic protections for renters who are being devastated by the ridiculously rising rents, completely incompatible with renter income increases. It is simply cruelty and economic violence on your part to leave the entire burden of this obvious economic crisis on renters alone. On the part of the population... Of population on the receiving end of the crisis, an immediate temporary cap is a simple way to allow the city time to consider rent control and to pass a strong rent control measure without destroying people's lives in the interim. I trust that you are not interested in deliberately hurting the most vulnerable of your constituents. I cannot put it any simpler... In any simpler terms. Don't tell us, with your inaction, that in times of crisis, your default is to hurt the more vulnerable 60% of your constituents. Don't ignore our demand and vote for an immediate temporary rent cap. Thank you, and looking forward to see you next week.
Thank you. Question for Heike?
Yes. Mr. MacMurran?
I have a question for you. Mr. Gallo gave us a list of the recent sales of apartment buildings. And last week, I requested that staff work with you and your group to identify addresses. We don't need the people's... We don't need the residents' names. All we need is the address or names of the landlords that are gouging those people that you're bringing here. Have you done anything towards that end?
We feel it actually is counter for what we're trying to do. And with all due respect, we're trying... We're asking, we're demanding, when there is a crisis that is... That covers... That addresses the entire... That hurts the entire city and the region, it needs to be addressed appropriately. So, we're not looking for specific landlords. That's a whole... The city wants to take on, they should take it on. It's a multi-part thing. Absolutely, the city should take on addressing those landlords that are really going bad. But the reality is that the prices... Again, 59% of renters are rent-burdened. That's more than just a few people raising their prices. So, we feel that the statistics speak for themselves. If the city wants to assemble a task force to do it, I think you should. We absolutely think you should. And do that, we'll be supportive.
Don't you have that information right with you with the people that you... The residents that you bring in here every week?
Yeah, we have. We have specific stories. But I feel it's anecdotal, and I feel it's actually counterproductive to do that, to be talking about specific... We have specific... You've heard about from specific people. Like, the way that you're posing the question assumes that you haven't heard from specific people. You've heard from specific people for years. You actually all have spoken about this at various occasions, that you've heard from people. Like, you're not deaf. You know that people come out and talk about their issues very clearly. So, we feel to put the burden of this kind of work on the Glendale Tenants Union that actually, again, is veering away from the very clear numbers that speak for themselves.
Thank you, Mr. MacMurran. I have another fifteen. I have one more question for you before you leave.
Yeah.
Just wanna have a very short answer. This report that was given to us, and also, I just wanna make sure I heard you right, that since the year 2000, rents went up 32%?
Yes, in L.A. County area. That's L.A. County's numbers, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Greg Astorian, followed by Kanam Sidi, followed by Fram Buchanan, followed by Walter C. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor Portem, my name is Greg Astorian, members of City Council. I am not here on behalf of FID Foundation, group, organization, or association. This is basically based on my own volition, and I'm here to address the issue of rent control. I will not be labor you with the economic arguments why it is not the right policy, but I will touch on two things only. And then I will go on, and I'm hoping that the Tenants Association will be listening to this. Then I will go on as... And provide with... To you an alternative solution. First and foremost, rent control does not increase your supply. And that's the problem. If it is true that we are short 19,000 affordable units in City of Glendale, by initializing as policy... As a public policy of rent control, that's not going to increase your supply by 19,000. Secondly, rent control, the problem that it has is that it's not means-tested. What do I mean by that? I give the Tenants Union the credulence that they need at this moment. I believe that there is a wound that needs to be healed. But to heal that wound, you don't go out and build clinics. That wound needs to be healed today and now. And what better way of healing that wound? And here I come with support of Measure S. What better way of healing that wound other than using the public... A revenue source that is public for the benefit of the public? This is precisely why my family, my sphere of influence, the folks that I know, will be... Will be voting for Measure S. Because it will generate an additional revenue source for this city to do to enough about $30 million. I know you can't make any commitments how that money is going to be spent. And that measure hasn't passed. But if there is any compelling reason why that measure needs to be passed is exactly what I'm about to share with you. If we believe that there are 3,000 or 4,000 totally destructively rent-burdened folks, representatives of which are standing or sitting behind me, then I think that is the place that you need to start by targeting a portion of that money that you are going to be collecting as Measure S in order to allez, assuage, and help them heal that wound. What do I mean by that? Right now, Mr. Lanza-Fame has got a staff that does wonderful work in administrating the Section 8 program that the City of Glendale has or the federal government has. What I'm proposing is the following. I am positive that the Tenants Union would have the names on that petition, whoever has signed for that rent control measure. That is a great place to start. If HUD allows you, let's say, an amount of $1,270 for a two-bedroom and one-bath apartment, and the rent, the market rent, is $1,800, then that portion, that difference, to bring the HUD money to the market needs to be given to the folks as a subsidy. But that subsidy, again, has to be means-tested. Let's take the one-bedroom. In the case of a one-bedroom, it's 900 versus 1,400. If it's 4,000 people we're talking about, and I believe that is exactly what that is, if you go back to the 2016 records or the report that you had, the most rent-burdened folks are the ones that are making below $30,000. I'll add to that, that today, the most people that I saw here also included a lot of senior citizens. So, you will be helping this group get the list, make sure that they are actually renters of the City of Glendale. And that's the means testing. And make sure that you will be able to provide that subsidy to them. That will cost you close to about $10 to $12 million. Guess what? Your landlords have no issue with you. Your tenants will not have an issue with you. And that additional money that goes in the pocket of that tenant as a subsidy comes back to the economy, and therefore, it will have what is known as a multiplier effect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just, Mr. Astorian, just that... I wanna make a clarification. You said 3,000 to 4,000 people. If the subsidy amount, let's say, is $600, it will be $2.4 million from that, any resources that we have to try to allocate, to subsidize the rent like the Section 8 does. And I think it's a great idea. And that's what we've been talking about. And I think you hit the nail on the head by the very sophisticated way that you explained it tonight. But very, very simple way that I think everybody understood that most people who come here are seniors. And seniors, we all talked about, and that's why we have affordable housing that specifically geared towards seniors that's being developed at this time. Because their income plateaued, and they're in a tough situation, and we understand that. So, wanna thank you for...
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Portem, you don't have to measure an elephant to know it's big. So... Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Agajanian.
That's $2,400,000 a month. So, that would be 20-some... 24, 26 million dollars a year.
Right.
If he wants to subsidize. So, it's better we do buy the property and make the affordable housing rather than just paying money for just one year.
Okay. Very good point. Mr. Sidi, you're next, followed by Fram Buchanan, followed by Walter C. Mayor.
Good evening, City Council members. I just wanna elaborate on the gentleman that spoke before me regarding the petitions and the names. Originally, the Glendale Tenants Union collected approximately 11,500 signatures. And when that was rejected due to some technicality, we went back and we collected 4,000. So, I don't think legally we can give out those names to anyone. So, you know, I don't think that's appropriate. Maybe I'm wrong. But I don't think we can give those names out because of these people that have actually signed. The first thing I wanna address here is to Councilmember Divine. Last meeting, you commented that the city should contact these landlords that are increasing rents at a higher rate. The Glendale Tenants Union has done this on behalf of the tenants. When the tenants come up to us and they show us their notices, just like they did to Mr. Garpenian, who has actually seen those notices, we contact them, and we find that these are mostly management companies. They're owned by investment groups or corporation using property management companies as gatekeepers. The management company's response is, there is no rent control in Glendale, so we can do this. Individual landlord's response is, well, we're increasing our rents before the City Council passes rent control. And they're right, because the law is on their side at this time. And that leaves the Glendale tenants defenseless. They're getting away with this. They oppose rent control because they wanna continue to get away with this. Now, we're not targeting the fair landlords. It's the ones that are coming in and buying property. They're usually overpriced, and then they try to make the difference from the tenants. Now, if I'm a smart investor, the first thing I will do is do the numbers. If I'm gonna run into a negative like the previous person says, $2,000, well, will I buy that piece of property having to raise their rents as much as they have to? I don't think that's a smart business investment. Other cities with no rent control are beginning to push back. They are cities like Pasadena, Alhambra, St. Gabriel Valley, Monterey Park, Santa Ana, Long Beach, and Inglewood. This is real. Glendale tenants need your help. They're desperate. You cannot let this continue. You can fix this tonight if you want to by introducing a temporary rent freeze. We're not asking for a permanent rent freeze. We need to do a temporary rent freeze because there are rent increases that are taking effect November first. Now, once these rent increases take place, how are you going to reverse it? I've listened to some of the speakers this morning, I mean, earlier, and, you know, they say rent control doesn't work. Uh, it creates socialism. Well, I pointed out this before. There are fifteen cities in Southern California that does have rent control. And I pointed out very clearly, name one of those fifteen rent control cities where it has stopped developers building large apartment complexes, and has it slowed down economic activity. So the point is that you have rent controlled cities there that's working. Now, no one's come up here and say, hey, look, it's not working in a certain city. That's what we need to see. And this is the reason why none of the cities has reversed or overturned rent control, because it doesn't work. So those are my main points.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Fran Buchanan, followed by Wal- Walter, followed by Tigran Albandian.
Uh, Mayor Protam, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Fran Buchanan, and I'm here speaking on behalf of a property at twenty-one hundred Valderris. That's off of Broadview, just around the corner from Verdugo Hills Hospital. My property is a twelve-unit that sits on an acre and a half. And across the street, there are sixty-six units on a property that is six and a half acres. They are the cut in the mountain, so behind them is a eighty-five-degree slope. They've got nowhere to go. They're, they're against the mountain. Then the street, and then our property, which is the fill, which is nice and flat. Uh, we've been running this property since the nineteen eighties, and, um, we are smoke-free and, um, have pet restrictions. The sixty-six units across the street are, um, smokers and a lot of young people, and they have no pet restrictions. So in the sixty-six units, we estimate there's about forty-four dogs. We have the flat property. We are right across the street on the cul-de-sac. This little cul-de-sac is the entrance to all of these sixty-six units that stretch all the way to Broadview. And, um, over the years, since the eighties, we've had four or five fences. Some of them get taken out by runaway trucks and cars. Some of them get taken out by vandalism. And, um, we need these fences because the sixty-six units and all the pets love our oak trees and our beautiful landscaping and our private property. And so we have had various fences over the years, ranging from this height, right now, down to eighteen and a half inches. I have pictures here. This is a picture of the fence, which is two twenty-five-feet-long boards on a concrete foundation that runs the entire length of the property, which is about two hundred feet. And over the years, we've had great high ones. We've probably spent thirty or forty thousand dollars on fences since nineteen eighty. And, um, we cannot keep the dogs, the beer bottles, the condoms, the trash, and all the feces. We just can't deal with it. And now the city wants us to take down our eighteen and a quarter-inch fence. This is the only thing that keeps, uh, most of it out. It would be much worse if we didn't have that little eighteen and a quarter-inch fence. And I measured it today, and from the, uh, ground, concrete here, up to the top, the measure tape shows eighteen and a quarter. If you'd like to see it. And all I'm asking is please let me keep my two-hundred-foot fence, because I can't deal with all the stuff that goes onto that property. The manager across the street put in a spe- special smoke area for all their people, but they don't use it because it's in the sun and it's hot, and it's out by the front of the street. We have the oak trees and the landscaping, and it's all beautiful and lovely, and it's a grand spot to spend the evening, drinking beer and smoking and watering your pets and whatever. And it's a big problem because it's a health hazard with all that trash. And we have a gardener once a week, but, you know, they don't even like to deal with it. You know, they're supposed to leave, deal with leaves and twigs and grass, not all this stuff. So I am now being fined by the city. It starts at a hundred and twenty dollars, next month it goes up to two hundred and forty, the month after that it's four hundred and whatever, and nine sixty after that, for my little eighteen and a quarter-inch fence, which saves a lot of trouble. Now, I realize you don't like fences, but this one's really necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Agajani.
I have a question for our city staff. So they can't have that, that fence?
No, the, the code prohibits fences in the front, uh, front setback. And as I understand this, and I would have to go out and, and look, the fence looked higher than eighteen and a half inches from the, the photo that I saw, uh, from our, um, code enforcement staff, uh, but I can go look at it again and...
Please do and measure it.
But the, there are no fences in our front setback.
It's in the front because that's where it's got to be.
Please, please have a seat. Uh, Councilmember Agajani has a, has a, uh, your portion is, thank you. There will, there will, there's somebody from the, the planning will get back to you, code enforcement will get back to you and measure whatever has to be done, see if they can help you out, of course.
But does the code say you can have an eighteen-inch wall?
I believe you can have a wall, a planter. I, I'm not even sure if you can have the, the, the wall and planter. That I have to go back and check. But I know that, that the property, and I don't doubt Ms. Buchanan, but in looking at historical photos, um, we saw years, two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, where there was no fence there, which was after the council implemented your policy of no fences in the front setback.
But the wall, if a wall was there, it might be, you're going to check on that?
I'll check on it as a planner.
It was probably when we had the runaway truck or runaway, whatever.
Councilmember Agajani, do you have, do you have?
Yeah, I just, uh, so you're saying we have laws that prevent or doesn't let anybody to have any fence? Because I remember the short-term one was allowed. I can't remember how many inches, but there were, years back, there were discussion that they are allowed to have shorter one, not the high fence.
No, our, our code was no fences in the front setback. And I, I'll, again, I'll double-check, um, the, um, the wall and planter, uh, but there are no fences. And over the years, the council has looked at this and said, no, that's what we want to do. Where we have had walls, or fences rather, that predated two thousand and five, and they needed some repair, we've allowed them to be repaired. But when the fence comes down, we don't allow another fence to go in, a new fence to go in.
And might I, might I suggest, um, Mayor Protam, Larpetian, members of the city council, might I suggest that we'll look into the, into the matter that was brought forward by Ms. Buchanan, provide an update to the city council by way of memo, and get back to Ms. Buchanan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Walter.
Because that fence was so expensive.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Buchanan, we cannot have this conversation back and forth, please. They will get back to you and, and, no, no, no need to be sorry. Walter, followed by Tigran Albandian, followed by Wigan Ohanian.
There, okay. Mayor Protam, and members of the city council, and staff, and ladies and gentlemen, I am Walter C. Meyer, and I'm against the proposed rent control measure, that you're considering, okay? In my opinion, the city council has three options, okay? One of them is no rent control at all. The other one is rent control with a fixed number that you're probably going to debate on, right? And the third one is one that I'm proposing, okay? And it relates to, uh, Councilmember Divine's question of, and I was here during the last meeting, and she was asking about potentially some research on how many people are gouging the rent, what's going on in that area? And I heard from this one gentleman on this side, and a lady on this side, and they said, correct me if I'm wrong, well, we don't have the money, we don't have the people, and we don't have the time, so everything sort of trots, okay? And so that got me to thinking, and I said, well, maybe there's a different way to approach this. What's a different way? What if the City of Glendale said, call it a rent increase approval requirement, okay? Ten percent and above rent increases are required to get an approval, okay? And now you have the regular population of apartment owners that can increase the rent between zero and ten percent, and then anybody coming in that wants more than ten percent can talk to you and discuss it and lay out a plan for you. Did the mortgage go up? Yes, if you buy a new property, it will. Did the tax go up? Yes, if you buy a new property, it will, or if you build it, well, if you build a new one, it doesn't apply anyway. But if you buy a new property, it will. Did the expenses go up? Yes, they go up, okay? And so they can come to this, to the housing agency or department and say, we want a dispensation or we want approval for a higher rent increase. So that would be a dirt option, okay? And that would probably solve Councilmember Divine's question with how many people are gouging. And nobody wants to give you that answer. So this way you have control over it. So let's, uh, talk about this increase or this rent, rental increase approval requirement, okay? The main reason for the rent control that I hear about here is people are gouging us. That's what the tenants are saying, okay? We're getting these rent increases. So let's look at this fear mongering, okay? Are a hundred percent of the landlords increasing the rent by a hundred percent? The answer is no, okay? Are a hundred percent of the landlords increasing the rent by seventy-five percent? The answer is no, okay? Are a hundred percent of the landlords increasing the rent by fifty percent? And the answer is no too. Even if we say, are a hundred percent of the landlords increasing the rent by three percent, which is a number that you're sort of debating, the answer is no, because we heard from all the other, from a lot of the landlords, that they haven't increased the rent at all. So consequently, a hundred percent of the landlords are not increasing the rent by three percent. And then a point that was made here in a meeting today, and, uh, Councilmember Garpetian mentioned it, how many, how much of an increase did you have from two thousand to twenty-eighteen? Thirty-two percent. That came up a number of times today. And one gentleman made the calculations, what, one point seven percent rent increase? Well, is that something that, uh, is of concern? One point seven percent, when you're now considering a three percent, probably a limit on the rent control? So we certainly could have something of that nature. I mean, we, we experienced the reality with Simpson's statistics, and it isn't in the fifty percent, the seventy-five percent, or anything else. So consequently, we could, the City of Glendale could compose an ordinance that says all yearly rent increases of ten percent or higher require the approval of the housing department.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tigran Albandian, followed by Wigan Ohanian, followed by Kathy Morphopoulos.
Dear Mayor and Council, I want to thank you for your time. I've been here before, uh, to raise concerns of rent control, providing data supported by decades of research. The concerns I raised were not rhetorical questions, yet the tenant unit continues to ignore these concerns. They have one argument in favor of rent control, just one, and it is an emotional one based on sympathy and cries for fairness. So let's talk about fairness. No owner has ever raised the rent above market rent. It'd just be a terrible decision. You would have vacancy, downtime, commissions, remodel, also you could rent at a lower rent. Any increases that people complain of are up to or below market rent. Those families who claim they're being devastated by an increase, assuming that no increase is above market rent, which it is, then they're living in areas they can't afford. They have sufficient notice to move to areas they can't afford. Those landlords who are being accused of gouging, I can guarantee you all, those tenants who've had substantial rent increases, their rents were extremely below market. Maybe they're paying eight hundred. No one's asking how much these tenants were paying rent. They're asking how much were their, was their increase? Was it thirty percent, forty? Ask them what their existing rents were. So do we feel bad for these tenants because they've had a thirty percent increase? Or should we envy these tenants who've had the opportunity to save thousands of thousands of dollars while everybody else got to pay market rent? So please focus on the question of what was their existing rent compared to market and not just increase percentage. A mortgage for a two-bedroom condo in Glendale has increased more than rent has for a two-bedroom apartment. Tenant union says they are burdened of rental expense because it exceeds thirty percent of, uh, of their finances. Our federal lending guidelines approve homeowners with debt-to-income ratios of, of up to fifty percent. Some homeowners have less discretionary income than tenants, yet homeowners are not asking for a price control. Homeowners are not complaining because we understand very few simple concepts. We understand that a free market is fair. We understand the simple concept that a seller has the right test for market value. We understand the simple concept that good neighborhoods cost more. How is it fair to control rents but not prices? Are you not discriminating against homeowners who share the same housing burden as tenants? Council, would you ever ask a seller of a Glendale condo to accept a lower offer out of sympathy for one buyer over another? No, you wouldn't even consider asking, let alone forcing them through a formal program like rent control. You wouldn't, because it wouldn't be fair to strip the property rights of that homeowner, because it wouldn't be fair to the buyer willing and able to pay more for that same property. How is the rental market any different? Do condo owners and apartment owners both not have the same property rights? Are we being fair to other tenants willing and able to pay these rents? Tenant union will tell you landlords are not people. Their picket signs will tell you they are large corporations with deep pockets. That's not true. Some are retired citizens relying on this income. Some are hard-working residents who have made sacrifices for years, saved enough to invest in Glendale. Some even pulling money out of their 401Ks. It is undeniable fact that market values for multifamily properties in Glendale will plummet overnight should rent control be approved. We're not talking about hundreds or thousands of dollars. We're talking about Glendale landlords losing millions of dollars overnight, most cases losing their entire down payment. In what world is that fair? We need to distinguish between a business proposal and a favor. Business proposals benefit both parties, while favors only benefit one party, usually at the expense of others. It's very clear to see that demanding rent control is no different than asking for a favor. Favors should never be negotiated. Favor, favors should never be demanded, and no government body should ever force one party into doing a favor against their will, against their will, which is essentially what rent, rent, rent control does. Council, don't risk ruining this beautiful, prospering city, as your predecessors have done for an entire century. Have the courage to do what is truly fair and reject rent control. Have the courage to do what is truly fair and reject rent control. If not, then at least let your own residents decide the fate of this city. Don't strip our rights, don't strip our voice, especially when there is an undeniable conflict of interest for every single council member. Thank you.
Against Mohanyan, followed by Kathy Morphopoulos.
This is my, hi, Council. It's my first time being in such a meeting. I just came to hear what's going on, and I'm kind of puzzled that why this subject is even on the table to discuss, because for obvious reasons, you guys all are educated, knowledgeable, and experienced people here. You should do better than this. You know, by having the rent control, not only are you gonna discourage the investors and developers, this is gonna limit the ability of the people to build and improve their existing properties and immediately, I think, some of them, if not majority of them, will decide to sell and move to other places. This is gonna make the situation worse than what it is right now. I understand we have a problem, but at the same time, I saw a majority of the people who were present tonight, it's sad to say, majority of them were at older ages, they wanna be close to their children, to their grandchildren. I understand that. I am a grandfather myself, I would like to be close to my children, and maybe they don't have the resources to move out. But for those limited percentage of people, I don't think you should impose such a big and important decision to majority of the landlords, because this is gonna backfire, this is gonna make the situation worse. And I think there were beautiful ideas that were discussed and suggested today. It's my first time, as I said, I'm in such meetings, and I was very impressed with few ideas that people have brought it on the table. I think, I do understand that you are under pressure. I'm not surprised if a lot of people have approached some of you and asked for the problems that are facing with. I do understand, and it is your responsibility to hear people and to try to solve the situation. We all know there are problems. At the same time, we are living in a free country. If somebody cannot afford to buy a Mercedes-Benz, he doesn't have to buy, he can buy a different type of car, some people who have suggested here. I think it's, majority of them, as I said, they're not as educated, as knowledgeable, as experienced as you are. And I think the burden of closing this problem, it's, it's on you, plus you should bring some people from outside who are experienced in building and developing properties to be able to come up with a reasonable and logical solution to solve this problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Morphopoulos, followed by Artun Barsegyan, followed by Linda Lalayan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Red Ribbon Week just completed today. That's a week-long time period that's dedicated to educating the young about their problems to do with tobacco, with alcohol, and with drug use. So the 2018 theme was "Life is Your Journey, Travel Drug-Free." I was part of several red ribbon events in Los Angeles, and they were very successful in educating teens and young adults about avoiding addictive substances such as nicotine found in tobacco, alcohol, and THC found in marijuana. I live in Glendale, but I'm active in neighboring cities, because what happens to our neighbors can affect us. You know, there's a lot of education on why the under 21, with the developing brains up to 25, should beware of using things that have addictive properties. But it's often forgotten that people who are dependent on any of these addictive substances, they are financially draining to the community. So it's a profit for a few and expensive for the rest. That's the business model of addictive substances. So I wanted to hand out this report. It's an annual report on high-intensity drug trafficking areas. Now, I printed the newest version of the Colorado Report, believe it or not, this is the abridged version, but I wanted you to see it because it's printed in color and you can easily see the graphs. I'm going to follow it up with the actual PDF version, it's longer, but the value to this, to you guys as council members, is let's say you had a question of, you know, what percentage of Colorado local jurisdictions permit medical or recreational pot? You would know that. It's in here, it has a very clear index, so you can find anything. Sometimes they claim, if we have more pot, we'll have less opioids. If we have more pot, we'll have less alcohol. All of those things are covered in this report. So you think, well, why am I giving one out on Colorado? Why don't I give it on California? Well, I'm gonna send you that one too. So, the reason I'm sending it to you on Colorado is because Colorado has been in this, they were the first to legalize and what they call normalize high THC pot. And so they have a longer history, you can see the trends, you can see what's happened there more readily. But nevertheless, we do have one for California, and I will send that to you PDF style. So, the key point, I think, I didn't realize I was gonna have five minutes, and I actually don't wanna talk for five minutes, but I just wanna cover a couple of small points. They have graphs in here that explain, in all of the budget of Colorado, what percentage is the gross revenue from this high THC products? And it's less than 1%. So when you talk about all the troubles that it costs, which is the, you know, this report basically covers the unintended consequences. Nobody intended to increase the crime rate, to increase the suicide rate, to increase all of the troubles. No one intended that. They intended to do something else. Usually, people voted for it because they wanted to tax it, they wanted to control it, regulate it, kinda keep it under control. But instead, what's happened is it's created so much negative consequences with fatalities, impaired driving, emergency, hospital admissions, the cost to rehab is just amazing. And the black market has exploded in the areas that permit it. Now, keep in mind, in Colorado, only 60, 65% of all local ban it. So all of the trouble is coming from 35%. So I, I'm gonna hand them out, and I really just did this, and I printed it in color, because I just wanted you to get an idea of the graphs, okay? And that's pretty much it, unless anybody has anything to say.
There is a question. Masago Janu.
What's your background that you're explaining all this?
Yes, I am a certified drug educator, but I'm by trade a real estate loan officer.
Aye.
And just to tell you a funny anecdote is, whoa, says sum up, never mind, forget the funny anecdote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Artun Barsegyan, followed by Linda Lalayan.
Yes, Hartun Barsegyan is, you're the senior housing in Glendale, North Campbell, Pogotsi, Yergar Dastnik Shenkum. My name is Hartun Barsegyan, and I've lived at 215 North Campbell for seven years now.
I was informed that someone would like to build a senior housing in the parking lot, which is located in front of our building. It is a wonderful idea.
But there is the other side of this question.
There are 30 families in our building, and each family has one parking spot.
Most of the families have two, two, three cars to get to work.
If they park one car in the parking lot, they have to park others on the street, which causes the residents to park one or two blocks away, and they come home tired.
I'm concerned about new senior residents who are going to live like us and breathe black suit. There are no recreational areas which could allow them to come out in the evening and sit on tree-lined and fastened benches in a night and park. I ask you to please build this project in a place which has a park nearby. And build a park here for the seniors who live here, so we can come out in the evening and enjoy the park. I have a big patio, and I cannot sit there because of black suit. When I want to wash my patio, the building manager tells me to conserve the water and not to wash it. Considering that we are your constituents. I suggest that residents meet with council members. I suggest that residents meet with council members one by one to get the details about the construction of the building. So that no problems will arise later. I ask you to notify the residents about the appointment, place, date, and time. Thank you.
Is this on North Campbell?
North Campbell.
Oh, Campbell. Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, Campbell.
Can you, just a couple of things, just let him know that this council is always ready to meet with the constituents, with the residents.
Yeah, he left all his information, so I'll make sure to check the calendar and contact him. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next speaker is Linda Lalayan, followed by Linda Newmeyer.
Hello, my name is Linda Lalayan, city council members, staff, and mayor. I actually don't know who the mayor is, I haven't seen him, so, anyway, I'm here just to speak. First of all, I wanna say that there were many wonderful speakers here, and they were very eloquent and had very smart ideas. I'm here just to say a few things about my experience and my personal situation. So I will start by saying my name again. My name is Linda Lalayan. I, I'm here to ask you to vote no on rent control. I have lived in Glendale for almost 22 years, some of you know me from the past, and have a small four-unit to compensate my very small pension as an adult ed teacher who's retired now. I'm not a big landlord, I'm like one of the other landlords, most landlords in this city, I think, they really do the right thing, and they never increase their rents that high, like, you know, we've been hearing. But as a landlord, I have spent over, I would say, $150,000 that I borrowed from the bank to make improvements, so my tenants can have a better quality of life. My rents, my rent increases in the last 16 years have been probably between 2% and 3% for these improvements, and I'm still paying for them, and I will probably pay for it for a long time. As one of you said, and I think it was the mayor that said, I also have worked very hard and given my heart and soul to keep this city, the jewel city that we all like to live in. Rent control is not the solution for our quality of life in Glendale. One of the reasons, I think, is because of my experience in New York City. I lived in New York for 20 years, and like one of the other people said, rent control has been around for decades. I believe that has not improved the rents in New York. You know, you all know that it's one of the most expensive places that you can live in. New York City is very expensive. And I, I think, in my opinion, from my observation and having lived there, I believe when rent control came in, many areas of the city, for example, Hell's Kitchen, East Village, and many others that I can't remember right now, the landlords could not afford to make those improvements because they could not raise the rents. So what happened, over the years, invest, bigger investors came, corporate, you know, corporations came, they bought these places, made, you know, big buildings, and the rents kept going up. And yes, New York City has beautiful areas now, but the rents are very high. And I think, I'm looking at, not just for, maybe temporarily, this might be a very small solution, but I think over the years, you will have this multi-ethnic and multicultural community that we love so much. Corporations will come, you will have more condos, and in New York, it's co-ops, places will be bought up, changed to co-ops or condos, and buildings will go up, and the rents will keep going up, and it will be much higher than what we have right now. And again, I just wanna repeat that small, you know, investors like me and like some other people, most people in Glendale, we do not raise our rents that high. It's $50, $100, just to compensate for our expenses. So please think about this, and please vote no, and find a solution, and I'm sure you are very brilliant people, and you have brilliant people working for you. Find a solution that will help a very small group of people that do need, and my heart goes after them, because I lived in New York and I rented in New York, and I realize how difficult it is. But there are other solutions that I think will work much better than rent control. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Newmeyer, followed by Anahit Sargosian.
Hello, my name is Linda Newmeyer, and I'm here in support of rent control. I'm going to read a little bit from a, a report that was put out by the Haas Institute in this year, and I will also give that to you. I assume you already have it, because you've done your research, but I will give this to you anyway. I am a renter whose rent has gone up 40% this year. My, I live on Chestnut, and my, the company, the management company is Blackstone. I talked to a woman this week, because I am always at, at least, usually about once a week, I met John's, and I'm telling people about tenants' rights and inviting them to come here. And I talked to a woman this week who lives on Elk, and her rent went up by $500 this year, and her management company is Concord. I asked her what she was doing now, and she said she's living with another family. So, she was a younger woman, by the way. I want to tell you that I've spoken to many young people at John's who I invited to come here, and they haven't showed up yet. But you must understand, and you should perhaps come to John's with me, just to stand But you must understand, and you should perhaps come to John's with me, just to stand there and listen to the stories, because there are young people with children, there are young professionals, there are older people, and I celebrate the older people who've been coming regularly. I am a teacher, I teach art in high school, I work about sixty hours a week, like all teachers do, and I can't afford to lose six thousand dollars a year on rent. My, my income doesn't go up by six thousand a year. So, let's see, if Calif, I'm now, I'm going to read from the report a little bit. If all California renters paid only what they could afford on housing, they would have, they would have twenty-four billion dollars more each year to spend on the economy. If I had six thousand dollars more a year, I would be spending a lot of it in Glendale. But I don't. So that means I cut, and all of us cut different ways when this happens to us. The obvious way we cut is clothes, clothes, you, and then food, and, but you still have a rent over your, you're, you still have a home over your head. I've talked to people who are young who moved into their cars. So, you know, we cut, 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 until we can't cut anymore. And then, and we try to find places that we can live, but it's very difficult now. We're not the only ones that lose, though. The city loses, and the state loses, and this is one of the things that the report says, that California would have twenty-four billion dollars more each year. In addition to the foregone consumption of renters that is, is crowded out by housing cost, the McKinsey Global Institute estimates that the state loses another ninety billion dollars due to missing construction investments, contributing to a total loss of a hundred and forty billion dollars per year in output due to the housing crisis, equivalent to six percent of the state's GDP. Another argument that is frequently made is the glories of the market, and we need to listen to the market above all things. Well, I don't understand that argument. The debate over rent control is, is too often dominated by a false dichotomy in which government and the market are opposed to each other. In fact, government makes markets possible. Government establishes the detailed structure of law and regulation that defines the rights and obligations of the parties involved, and government provides essential public investments and services such as transportation, public safety, and education. Without these, no market can function effectively in a modern society. Markets require appropriate public investment and regulatory oversight in order to deliver goods and services that are safe, fairly priced, and produced methods, and I could go on and on. But I just want to say finally, that you are not in a, in a unique position. Unfortunately, you're in a very common position. This is happening all over the country, this is definitely a problem in California, and when we come to you as renters, we expect, and we, we expect and we would appreciate if you would listen to us sometime, and put in rent control for Glendale. Thank you.
Ms. Newmeyer, do you, a quick question for you. Do you mind sharing with us your rent went up from which amount to which?
Yeah, I don't mind at all. So, I, I moved to this place in, I moved to this three apartment, three small apartments. I lived in a two-bedroom for about twenty-five years, and then I, I downsized to a one-bedroom, so I thought I could save money. And that, that apartment was under market price, and I was very happy to get it. It was nine hundred dollars a month. It went up to thirteen fifty, and in December, it's gonna go up another hundred. So, within about a thirteen-month period, my rent will have gone up by five hundred dollars. And it's, so again, it's a lot, it's a lot of money, yeah.
It is a lot of money. So, your last rent was nine hundred dollars when?
It was a year ago, about a year ago.
And how long did it stay nine hundred dollars? For how many years it was like nine hundred?
Well, I, I downsized, so it only stayed that for one year.
And was the building sold?
Yes, it was sold, and to someone, I don't know exactly who.
That's okay, we don't need to know the owner.
Yeah, but I would love to tell you, but, and it, it's the owner, now it's managed by Blackstone. And I've just, I've talked to other people too, whose rent has gone up a hundred percent, so.
And do you know what year was your unit built, the year built, of the, of the building?
No, I don't know, but I do think it was around World War II.
World War II, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next speaker.
There were no capital improvements, by the way, when the building was taken over, there have been none.
Thank you. Anahit Sargusyan, followed by Nayri Sukbatyan. Anahit Sargusyan. Okay, Nayri Sukbatyan.
Thank you.
Nayra Sukbatyan, I'm sorry. Is this thing on? Okay. Leon Kachuni.
Members, my name's Leon Kachuni. Remember, I was here last week, I've been here a couple of times before. I'm with the Foothill Apartment Association. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I think, I think I do have something to offer in the form of giving a little context to what's gone on in Southern California, at least in the area I'm used to, which is spanning from Burbank to Azusa down to Whittier. We basically focus on the San Gabriel Valley and the foothill cities along the foothill region. So, I've heard a lot tonight, and that's why I wanted to respond to some things. What I have seen going on, and I, I've been in my position as the director since 2011, is that in around 2012, I started getting a lot of calls about the market improving, and should I raise my rents? And I said, well, you can try, you know, whatever the market will bear. In that year, I saw a lot of vacancies remain on the market until the rents, the, the asking rents started to come down. So, cut to 2014, people started attempting to raise the rents again. Now, that's, you know, a two-year span that they're, that the rents are, are frozen. And I'm, and I'm talking about Glendale and Pasadena and South Pasadena. Our office is in Pasadena, and that's where most of our members are. Two thousand and fourteen, rents started to rise slowly. At that time, we saw a number of tenants' unions pop up in South Pasadena, in Glendale, in Pasadena, and bring issues like the, the tenants' union here has brought to the city council. The first was in South Pasadena, and it, it revolved around two properties, a total of ninety-six units, that were purchased by a, a, a new owner, and everyone had gotten the, the standard, what, sixty-day notice of a large increase in rents. Tenants' union came and said there was a housing crisis, and that they needed rent control, and they were fighting for rent control off the bat. I was at some of those meetings, I, I know what the rents are there, many of our members are in South Pasadena. What ended up happening was that the council convened a special ad hoc committee to work with the tenants and the new owners, and they hashed out an agreement that, that both parties were very happy with. And to, to this day, there has been no longer any calls for rent control. Rents have been rising, from 2014 to 2016, a little snapshot of the, of what I've seen, is the rents have risen in those two years much quicker than they had in the previous two years, and it had been pretty stagnant since 2008 to two twelve, to twenty-twelve. I have surveys on all of that data for Glendale, for Pasadena, South Pasadena. So, we all know about the housing crisis. We all know that there has been basically a stagnation of rate wages, salaries, earning capacities. That, that hits everybody in the state. Glendale isn't out of the ordinary. What also, I, I, one thing I have to mention before I wrap it up, and I'll try and be brief here. The Palmer decision of 2009 really damaged affordable housing, inclusionary housing, a lot of the programs that were established prior to that. Now, last year, Governor Brown signed into law the, the re-establishment of the redevelopment and inclusionary housing laws. And this is something we've been counting on to bring back the affordable housing across the Southland. Any, I, I can, I've been to the city council meetings, no one else is considering rent control at this time, and one reason they're doing that is because they all have Section Eight housing that has been very slow to grow in the past five or six years, and, and redevelopment has been at a standstill, and now there's a chance that it can come back. And if rent control goes through, it's gonna jeopardize those things. So, I, I support strongly any of the solutions that, that have been brought forward that don't involve rent control. There are things going on in other cities right now, talking about expansion of tenant protection ordinances, very measure S. We've talked with our people, and we're very supportive of that. Any of those solutions, we're happy to be a part of. Just, the, the rent control at this time would be very, would jeopardize the future of affordable housing and Section Eight for, for any city who decides to enact it right now. I'm close enough to closing, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. That was my last card. Would anyone else like to speak? This is your chance, if not, I'm gonna close the oral communication and ask our city clerk as to what's next.
Any new business?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
We are, we are adjourned.